Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Library Board of Trustees to order. Four trustees are present. Merrick Gordon is not. Is there anyone that would like to? I have one speaker form, but is there anyone who would like to speak to an item that's not on the agenda? Thank you. Approval of the minutes for the Library Board of Trustees meeting on September 12th. You all have a copy of that?
That, I was wrong. That should actually say October.
Oh, okay. I see. Yeah, I'm reading right. Okay, so that should be Oct- our October.
Yeah, because we're looking at October's minutes.
Okay.
Zach brought that to my attention when I came in today.
Okay, good. But we will add that as a change to the minutes. Any other questions about the minutes? Okay, could we have a motion, please? Okay, it's been moved by Schwab, seconded by Clements. All those in favor, please vote.
Motion approved, four zero.
Current business, determine the areas of focus for the next quarter of goal planning. Dara?
When I started, I believe, my first meeting in July, we discussed having areas of focus on a quarterly basis based on the topics that came out of the strategic report. So I didn't know that it would be time now to update those as far as we closed out of the quarter last month. So moving forward, do you have specific areas of focus? And if you want to reference that, that is in, under the director's report. I have put the goals in there and I was also going to present this as a way to reflect every month. We can do something like this if we don't want an area of focus where I could say last month's milestones under areas of inspire, grow, et cetera. It can be explained in the column for the month of what we did to hit those benchmarks.
So, sorry, the gray is what you have done in the past month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yes, it's everything that we've done in the past month. So I itemized, for example, under, let's see, under Connect. We had, to connect with programs for people with shared interests, we had Adult Graphic Novel Book Club. We had a Halloween makeup program. We also had our Second Saturday of the Month Concert Series. We had our Bi-Lingual Book Club and a scary movie. I thought it was a little better than just having X's underneath the month. I know that we have been tweaking this as kind of an ongoing process. So I guess I'm looking for some guidance here as far as how to continue with that. If I can do something like this and we just do all of the topics every month, then I can point, kind of highlight what we hit on. Or we can continue to do four areas of focus.
I think maybe we want to do a little, I like the format you've given us for this month. I'd like to see that, but I also think we probably should give you some direction on the focus. I don't know whether it is to be four specifically, but I like this because it kind of keeps us up, it keeps us in tune with what's happening and where it is on pendulum. But I also think that it's partly our job to give you some guidance on what's important to us. For example, when I was reading through the old section, I wanted, I wanted to ask you about what's happening with the refurbishing or relocating the lower floor. I found that intriguing and I wanted to know kind of how that is looking.
Are we talking about where we've moved the Spanish section and?
It was, it was on the old goals and I just happened to see it. And I know it's ongoing, but I just kind of wanted to find out to work with it.
I can speak to, we had, we put in new tables that allow people to sit and charge their devices or computers or, those are new and those are actually in the building. We've also added more upholstered pictures and booths for the teen area where they can sit and study as well. So that's what's been completed. And I know that that was in process as Patricia was outgoing and I was coming in. The other pieces that we are still in the process of are disassembling some unused shelves that were no longer used for our collection to create more open space because we'd like to have more of the tables where people can charge their devices because that seems to be the greatest need. Most people come in to use the Wi-Fi and their own technology.
Well, that's a good update because what I like to see is staff reacting to what the people would see as advantageous and then us moving towards it. And what you've just described sounds like that's what's happening, which, which I'm very pleased about.
Yeah, we tried.
Katie?
I'm sorry.
Is this just okay?
I turn it on, I can turn it on.
Okay. Sorry, I wanted to add to that because we're talking about rearranging bottom of the floor. We are currently in the process of moving our new large print section to be with the rest of the new materials because we have, a lot of patrons have asked us where that is. And so we're making it more consistent with the rest of our new materials so that they will be more front and center and available for patrons to see right when they walk in. So that is one thing we're actually currently doing this week. I just wanted to have that.
Great, thank you very much. John?
Works with the mic. Okay, on page 11, inspire, what's about five items down, increase investment in eBooks and audiobooks. I'm not sure it makes sense to look at that or talk about it every month, but I'd like to have a better understanding where we're going, maybe next month.
I think that would be a great area of focus, actually.
Okay.
And then, yeah, let's, let's put that on the docket as one of them that we want to make sure we specifically discuss because that one is, well, it currently says in progress. It's kind of always in progress, but at least that way I can give you updates on exactly what we're doing, whether, you know, it's with our SARAH Cooperative or if we've added other purchases.
Right, because when I had some conversations with Katie a long time ago, five months ago, whatever, about eBooks, there was, you know, I guess there's a balance between buying paper that you own and subscribing to an eBook which you have to keep paying for. And I just wondered how you guys were with that dilemma.
Do you want to add? Yeah. I'm going to let Katie add to that because she's been more involved in that due to her time here than I have.
So we try and keep a good balance of all formats. That would be regular print, large print, audio and the CD format, and then eBooks and e-audiobooks. We do have a large population here that really prefers large print and books on CD, the physical CDs, but we are getting more and more requests for digital materials. So the way it works is we, we have, have a contract with Overdrive, which is kind of the industry standard, most, most libraries in this area at least. That's one of two or three vendors that has e-materials that allow for checkout. We're part of the SARAH Consortium, the SARAH Cooperative, which is made up of many of the San Diego County libraries and some in, I believe it's inland, down south. So what happens is we, we, we all, part of the consortium, put money in every year and there's a woman who works with us and she purchases titles for the consortium. So those titles are shared with all of the libraries that are in that consortium, excuse me. And then additionally, each library has its own separate account, we are one of them, where we can purchase individual titles for our specific library. So we do have some of our titles coming in that are shared across several libraries and we do have some titles that we purchase or it's more of a lease type of situation the way that it works. So we try and always purchase a one copy, one use, which means it's just like a print book where you purchase the book and you can check it out as long as you want. But there are several publishers that only release as metered usage and certain titles are only released as metered usage, which means that you only have a certain number of digital checkouts before you have to repurchase that book. So we try really hard to stick with one copy, one use as often as we can, but there are some cases where we have to buy a meter if we want to provide whatever that book is in a digital.
Okay. How, what's it, what statistics do you use to determine any increase in demand for eBooks?
It's a good question. We do get, we have the purchase suggestion form, which is on our website, which does ask the requester what format they'd like the material in. So there's large print as an option, eBook, e-audiobook, CD. So we use that. There's also a specific within the Overdrive platform itself where patrons can request us to purchase a book. We only get those reports, I believe, quarterly from the consortium and we're actually working on revising our consortium guidelines. We actually had a meeting last week to discuss kind of how often we want to receive those, how long we should set checkouts for, et cetera. So we basically work off of, you know, what we're getting requested, but also as well, we try and purchase all of our book club titles as an eBook and an e-audiobook whenever we can. Anything that comes up on the bestseller list that we have high demand on the physical copies, we'll try and purchase digital copies as well. We do have one staff member who is primarily responsible for the adult audio and, or e-materials, including the audio and eBooks. And he stays on top of all of those things and uses his budget to purchase monthly for the e-collection.
Okay, so if I go on and see, I'm looking for an eBook, certain book.
Yeah.
And it's not there, I'll just go, oh darn, and then go on to either another eBook or maybe a paper copy if that's available. But I, I just don't have it in my head to go and say, hey, I'd like to see this in eBook.
Right. If someone, usually we, we link to it in each, if you're on the catalog, it'll, it'll say, you know, don't see what you're looking for, make a purchase suggestion. We try and put that link on as many of our catalog pages as possible so that if a patron is looking for something that we don't have in whatever format it is, that they will fill that form out so we can know that they like it.
Okay, so just, we need to get the word out to everybody that if you want more eBooks, ask for them.
Yep. And, you know, we're always happy to take suggestions and like I said, we have a new staff member who's, his primary focus is on e-materials and he's working on, on doing more of that.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Katie. Elmer, can you have any concerns or questions on these?
So, I do. I'm looking at the sheet here where it gives definitions of what complete and progress on target, past, do is. And, sorry, this is page 13. I'm wondering if, or how you would determine something to be in progress. Says here that it's, progress is being made towards completion, but like you said, a lot of the stuff is in progress. So what I would like to see personally, I don't know if the board agrees, but I would like to see what events or things you have in progress and what your estimated completion date would be for those events. So we're looking at like Enhanced Business Center with Technology Books and Electronic Resources. I would anticipate seeing the, what you just mentioned as the, the print coming onto the first floor and the expected completion date for that. That way we can track, you know, if, if we're meeting deadlines. And then two, it'd probably be easy for you to just shade that gray once it is complete for that month.
So I can't speak exactly to why they chose complete and progress on target, what the rationale was for those terms. I personally wish instead of in progress, they would have said ongoing because it would be more accurate.
Right.
Programs are ongoing.
Right.
Improvements are ongoing. There's months where maybe we, trying to think of an example, we don't do any changes to the first floor. And so it just says in progress.
Right. So what I, I don't mind it just saying in progress, but I want, if, if you have things planned, I would like to see what those things are and when you anticipate completing them.
So like a new column, in addition to what happened the month passed, a column of this particular one is on target for such and such date and it would be a brief description of where it is.
Right. So like if you, if you have an event in November similar to, I don't know, like to outreach to youth, you'll say, we have this event planned, it falls under these topics and the date that we anticipate having that event is this date. And that way, we as the board can look back a month and see, did that actually get completed and was it successful?
Okay. So I might, oh, what were, suggestions for the naming of that column?
I would just say.
It's really just status.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Really? I like it. Okay. Yes.
Yeah, but, but, and the more we can quantify it, I, I like the idea very much, Carolyn. You know, quantify it, you know, we, we plan to have, you know, whatever the steps are to just in as few words as possible, completed by.
Okay.
And then, then we can just see where you are the next month.
Right. So I think within the, the section on, I think it was, hmm, it was about, we had it as a goal previously about this, like staff improvements. Staff improvements, yeah, and technology. I think a perfect status item would be the 3D printer and that you were anticipating having that complete by the, I think you said the first of the year?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay. Yes, I like that.
So Dara, how do we, I would think marketing would be ongoing every month, every year. So how do we just put it in gray?
No, I think the status column.
Uh-huh.
We can always, we're always going to have initiatives, like the marketing, once created, for instance, your website, it's, it's there, exists, it's ongoing or in progress, but we know we're going to do a new skin to the website. I don't know the exact date, but we're, we're to the point that we're updating that and I can give you a date that we're anticipating that. So there's, throughout the year, always going to be something and since I can leave the date open, it's not a big deal if I have to announce something that's still three months in the future.
Right. Well, any sub-objectives for, you know, under, you know, what you're going to do for the marketing plan, you know, just lay them out, you know, they're not all going to happen next month.
Right. But I like the status piece of this a lot. I didn't think of that. So I, I kind of plugged this in and was just playing with it and it seems like more eyes on it. It's always helpful, but I would be, this keeps, this helps me a lot in planning and also remembering when I'm going out and talking to people because it makes me aware of a lot of the programs that are happening in the building or even anecdotal things that might fall into a column.
Mm-hmm.
It helps me when talking to people outside the library. So if you guys like this, I will happily put it in each.
That's a good idea.
Each meeting.
Okay.
One of the things that I have an interest in, and I don't know what exactly we can do, but that's the area of career growth. We have got a lot of people in this community who are, in most cases, retired, who could come in and talk to any kind of groups that we assembled if, if a group of people were interested in a certain profession. And I, I think that to him talking, criticism myself as a school administrator, we need to do more to help kids get ready when they go to college to not, the old idea like when I went, you went for two years and then you decide what your major is, doesn't work that way anymore. You really have to be on top of this. And so anything we can do in the area of, of education to help these kids start narrowing their choice and, you know, there are all kinds of printed materials and so forth, but I'm thinking more in terms of maybe occasionally, and I don't know if anybody, if we would get the kids to come out, but I'd love to see them come out to, if they were interested, for example, in being a police officer. I know we could very easily get someone from the police department or a fireman or an educator, doctors. We could, we could do that and I have no idea if the kids would really come out for it, but I sure would like to see it happening more because I think it would be a great, great asset to the community.
I like the idea. I would like to, before I make any guesses on the best approach to that, I want to talk to Kathy, our teen service librarian, as well as get, we have a group of interns that work with some of the STEM, like 3D printer, for instance, things like that. They, they do a project and have to report back to get credit at school. So we have kind of a focused group. We could quiz on what would get them to come and we have our teen librarian who's amazing at programming and getting that group to the library. So I'd like to get there and see how we would.
You have quite a few.
Fill that out.
It's from Del Norte, right?
Del Loco.
Del Loco, I've got it. Del Norte's down the way. I think that's a great idea and I really don't have in my head what I'd like to see, but I'd like to do what you're saying, is try to explore it a little bit. And I think the board could be helpful if we'd like, say, if we'd like to bring in a speaker.
Right.
You could, you could ask the board to be of help to go and find somebody in the community that's practiced in that field for, for years if, if there was any audience for them.
Right. And that's where I'd like, I think Kathy will have creative ideas, whether it's like, you know, sorry for this term, but it's speed dating type tables where you're rotating and they can sit and talk to, you know, a doctor, a school administrator, ask questions about what that job was like for that person. I, I don't know, but let me talk to her and I can give you an update.
That would be great. I really appreciate you taking that on. Anything else? Any other questions?
So did we establish things for you or?
We definitely brought up increase investment in eBooks and e-audiobooks. Did we pick other areas of focus or do we want to do it? Or do we just want to do it? Do you want to pick a couple of things that you'd like to hear back on specifically for next time and then maybe just?
We're kind of talking around this whole concept of enhancing the business center for technology and, and career growth and that kind of a thing.
So I guess, do we want to discontinue that we have to have a quarterly focus if we're going to go over this and then each meeting you can even point out a couple of things you'd like to hear from on the next meeting, whether it be the audiobooks or career development? I don't.
I think we, I think we might even end up with a mix, but, but the, I think the dynamics of, of looking at different things every month sounds, sounds good and some of them, you know, may end up repeating.
Okay.
If we find something we can really dig into.
So by adding the status column, I think that'll give you more insight, but I will definitely have a plan to highlight the eBooks and e-audiobooks as well as the career for next time.
Thank you. Ron?
Yes, Elmer.
I'm looking at the, one of the targets, growth support to build a new library and the response is on target. Can you give me an idea of specifically what is happening in that area, if anything at all? On target, that doesn't tell me what's going on towards that potential objective or that objective.
Joanne, do you have any updated information on that?
From the city's perspective, we have engaged in a community survey to hear back from the community about what their priorities are in terms of what the city's services should be and how they should grow or, or be refocused. So that presentation is going to City Council next Wednesday, November 20th, and the results of that survey are published in this staff report that go along with that agenda item. I think that was published today.
The agenda will be published after 4:30 today. You'll see.
So that information is available for the public to look at. Council will be hearing those results as well next week and I think that's probably laying the groundwork for some future discussions, diving deeper into what the priority is for library services.
Thank you.
Will, will it be a report or, what I'm looking at is, assuming I'm not at the council meeting, how would I, as one person, learn, okay, what do they do regarding that subject that I think you named?
The attachment to the staff report includes the results of the survey. So you'll be able to read through that and see what the community, how the community responded regarding their priorities and their satisfaction with city services. So you'll be able to read that yourself this afternoon after the agenda is published. If you aren't able to attend the council meeting, you can go back and watch it. There's a recording of the council meeting, so you can watch that on the city's website and hear the dialogue amongst the council members and members of the community if they speak to that agenda item.
So they meet on a Wednesday and then something is put in writing summarizing what they decided, if anything, regarding that subject?
The clerk's office keeps action minutes, so similar to how the minutes of your meeting appear, it says the council took this action. They're generally not super detailed because that's not the format that they appear in. So I would recommend that you watch the recording of the council meeting if you want to hear all of the detailed dialogue.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, our second item is the parameters for data that can be pulled from Polaris for the monthly statistical report for the library.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me back. You'll see on page nine of your packet, the monthly library statistics for September. You will also see an additional handout that says statistical summary that is also for the month of September. Please ignore the November data on there. So I'm going to go over the difference between these two reports and what they mean. So the one that I included in your packet includes more than just data that can be pulled out of Polaris. It includes our programming attendance data. It includes all of our e-material data. It includes our volunteers, our number of computer usage, our number of web visits, our service hours, our reference transactions. Those are all items that I have to pull from different sources. And the reason that this, as we've discussed on several occasions, the reason that this, this comes two months later is because I have to get that data from several individuals. I have to compile it into a report and then I have to double check it for accuracy. So what I've done, I've obviously altered the format based on what we had previously to better reflect what is asked for both by the California State Library on our annual state report, as well as the Library Systems and Services, LSNS standards that they ask all of their libraries to, to supply. What I'm trying to do is make a very streamlined statistic set that basically reflects what I'm giving to everyone. So some of these are things that are asked for on the annual state report and some of these are things you have asked before. Some of these things are things that are asked for by our Library Systems and Services Administration. The other port report that says statistical summary is directly pulled from Polaris. You'll notice that it has your number of checkouts, borrowers, number of items checked in, overdue items, how many holds are placed, how many holds are satisfied and how many holds are canceled, as well as financials and different items like. holds are canceled, as well as financials, and different items, like how many items we have in the system that were removed or added, et cetera, et cetera. This, I can run the first of the month. This could become current in your packet for the previous month because it is automatically generated. I don't do anything to that data. It says page five of five because the first four pages of the report break down statistics for Pioneer Room, the Lear, Literacy Learning Center, and then the regular library. This last page compiles all of that into one report, which is why I provided that report. So, my question to you, I would, I would like your input if you would review both reports, kind of let me know your thoughts, if you'd prefer to have the larger report, which will once again be two months later, but does include more anecdotal data, more program-related data, number of volunteers, et cetera, or if you'd prefer to receive just the statistical summary, which will be more current, but will not have some of that other information, or if there's other things you would like to see, if it's something I can pull, let me know, and I will look into that.
I think this is a good start. What I'd like to be able to see is to go over all the stuff that is available out of Polaris, most of which we probably wouldn't ever want to see, but it's generated, right? All we have, all you do is copy it down off, out of the reporter, off the screen, and it's on a report.
Can you clarify all the items that are available, like?
I don't know what that is. Monthly, your, most systems are, can summarize the activity on various incentive things. I don't know what else there is available out of Polaris besides the ones we have here, is what I'm saying.
I mean, there's pretty much any kind of report that you want generated. I can either custom generate, or I can look through all the various things. Most of our reporting is a list of all the holds, a list of all the items that have a certain number of holds on them. We can do how many notices were sent out, how many notices, like we use a lot of those reports as far as making sure that our billings go out on time and that.
Yeah, I see the holds, place holds satisfied, which we talked about last, after last meeting, which is great. Once we have maybe several months' worth of this, we can, we can see, you know, we'll have information that will establish a trend or, or tell us that it's, it's maintaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think in order to, to feel more comfortable with what we're doing, it would be useful to, to, to maybe spend some time with you and just dive down into the data and understand what's available, because my, my goal would be that we would have something that's easy. You just run the report, okay, and it's a number, and, and you don't have to massage it. It's just the number.
And that's what, that's what this report is.
Right.
This is a report that I hit a button, and I tell it my date range, and it pulls, this is, and this is your standard data that, that people are going to want. It's how many items circulated this month? How many patrons did you register this month? How many overall patrons do you have? How many items are in your collection? How much money did you collect? This is, this is that overall statistical report that has kind of your overview of kind of the, the main points that most.
Right.
Libraries use for comparative purposes.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm liking it. I'm, I'm just wanting to see what else is potentially available, but I don't want to do something, you know, I'm, I'm not a librarian, okay? I don't know how to run this business. What we're looking for is statistics that everyone can use down the road for the next several years to, to see how things are going. So, I just want, I think it'd be useful for me, maybe Carolyn, maybe you too.
Yeah.
To just, that we could just sit with you and dive into the data and see if there's anything else we, that we'd like to see, or maybe even potentially eliminate some of these. I don't know.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. If you can think of some things you're kind of interested in, you can get, I have got my, my business card. You guys should have my contact information. We can just.
Yeah.
Meeting.
All right.
The other thing I did want to say is this, this report, the one that is in here, is more of your kind of traditional overview of what has been fine-tuned over the last three years that I've been doing this, of kind of what you all have at one time or another requested to see.
Does it make more sense for the, the reports you have to fine-tune to do that on a, on a less frequent basis than monthly? Does it help?
I have to, I have to submit these monthly anyway.
Okay.
To, to our database for our company, so running, I run this monthly anyway.
Okay.
I just put it in a special spreadsheet. It's all I do. So, like I said, this one, it just, it takes me longer to do, which is why you guys get it a little later, whereas this one, if you just wanted this basic stuff, I could get this, you know, you'd have the previous month, even if your meeting was like on the second, I could get this to you.
Well, I just think it would be useful for all of us that if we, that, you know, this is good, that we have something like this that after I'm gone, not for a long time, but you're gone, or, or if we, you know, that we have numbers that just pop out of the machine, that it doesn't depend upon the, the expertise of an individual to make sure it comes out every month.
Okay. So, I have a question. If, are we, are we deep diving these now? Can we talk, talk about these statistics?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I think one of the things that would be helpful for me is, like we used to do with this.
Mm-hmm.
To compare on a monthly basis, these, what's in your statistical summary?
Okay.
So, that would tell us, you know, like, are we having an increase in borrowers? You know, are we, say, if we establish that as one of our goals is to get more people into the library, that would tell us over the last three months, yes, we've had an increase. Great, we're doing well. But I just want to make sure that the borrowers here are the actual patrons who have come and checked something out.
So, the, the patrons, where it says on the top, it says patron 65,543.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the total number of patrons that are in our database.
Okay, so that's.
So, some of those people may not have been active. With the new system, it's, it's a separate report. I'll have to run again to find out activity, but because we just transferred to this new system, my data's only going back to August 22nd of this year.
Right, yep.
So, our new, for the active, it's going to take three years because we actually now have cards expire at the three-year mark, so patrons will automatically be removed from the system or marked inactive after the three-year period of not using their card.
Okay, and then when it says borrowers right here?
Yes.
That number's 4,250. Are those the amount of people who have borrowed in the last month? They've checked something out?
I believe, yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, the checkouts of 34,000, we assume that.
That's how many items were checked.
Right.
By 4,000 people.
Okay, so we assume that each individual checked out an average of seven things?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the average, yeah.
Approximately. I mean, they could have done more or less, but we're assuming seven.
Okay.
And that, to me, would, would mean that they're coming in frequently and using quite a bit of material.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, definitely. So, you had 4,000 active borrowers in the month of September.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I like that statistic.
So, what I'll do then, and once again, I have, I have data, a full month worth of data starting in September, so when I present the statistics to you in December, I will, I will reprint this. In addition, I will also print the October and November statistics.
Perfect.
Because I can do that on the first of the month.
Yeah.
And I will submit all three sheets to you as part of the agenda.
Okay, great, and I think the, I think a three-month period is, is good enough for right now, so you, you know, in January, you would not have to print September.
Okay, gotcha.
Awesome, thank you.
Katie, how far back does $342,000 worth of fines go?
That's a great question, so.
A long way.
Yes. So, we, we transferred to the system on August 22nd of this year, and any, any fines that were previous within a certain parameter to 2016, as with the law, were removed, but only within a certain data set. So, there's some fine tuning I need to, well, it's difficult to determine, but basically, you can't collect on fines that are older than three years for your libraries. So, most of these charges are going to be more recent than three years. There might be some that are outstanding. That's something that's actually on my list of things to go through.
Wow.
Do we have, like, do we have a certain percent that we anticipate writing off of that 342,000? Like, we probably aren't going to get all of that, right?
No.
No.
I mean, the, so all these financials, everything that's charges and money collected, also too, you have to remember from September, we're also including media rental fees.
Okay.
So, your numbers for October and November are going to look very different because we no longer have media rental fees, but these charges include overdue, they include lost items, and so that would be then replacement items as well. You can see we collected $5,775. Based on my separate financial stats that I keep, that seems pretty accurate to me, so you would say out of, you know, what, was it 30 some odd thousand dollars, we usually get around $5,000 a month. And it just depends. Some dates, some months, we get a lot more, some months, we get a lot less, but that's kind of our average.
Okay. I think I would like more information on.
Yeah, I just want to remind you guys that all of those financials are related to the city.
Okay.
So, any revenue that's brought in, any fines and fees that are collected, that's all city.
Okay, so they're running it.
It's general fund money.
Right, so I would have to follow up with our finance department to answer your question, Carolyn, whether or not there is some expectation of writing off a percentage. That also was news to me about the fines older than three years. I know there has been quite a lot of recent laws that were passed and kind of some constraints in terms of how municipalities can, can collect fine, fines from people, or like the teeth that we have in order to go after people who carry a balance or are remiss in paying what's due to them, even with utility billing, et cetera. So, I'll need to circle back with the finance department and ask what's changed recently and how does that impact the library collection, but I can get that information for you next month.
Wonderful, thank you. And I just have one more question. How, how do we determine when a fee should be waived? It says amounts waived $3,000.
Some of them, especially because of, so I'm going to just preface this part. When we went to Polaris and we did activate the DVD rental fee.
Mm-hmm.
It was a new step that our staff had to take because the way that Sierra processed rental fees and the way that Polaris did it were different, which is one of the wonderful things about not having it anymore, but it actually added it as a fine on a patron account, and so my staff were not used to removing the fines and marking them paid, and so we had to learn a curve for a couple of weeks where people were not removing those fines.
Okay.
Some of this is, is good faith. The person returned the item. Really, more than anything, we really want them to return the item.
Right.
There could be any kind of reasons why fees were waived or not waived, but generally it has to do with how long the item has been checked out.
Right.
The, 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 like, if the person's been trying really hard to communicate with us to return items or work with us.
Okay.
It's often a good fee.
Right, and that's, that's the goal of getting them to return to the library.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we anticipate that's going to decrease, that amount will decrease significantly next month?
Yeah, like, like Joanna was saying, I need to work more with our finance department as far as that three-years thing.
Okay.
There was different articles about, like, you didn't collect on fines, and I had some things that I've, I've heard and some things I was told, and I want to make sure that I'm doing things appropriately before, you know, looking at that, but there might be a big chunk that shows is waived if we do have to go with that and retroactively remove fines older than a certain.
Okay.
But I will keep an eye on seeing that, but most of the time, it's $10 here, $5 here.
Right.
30 cents here, and it just accumulates over a period. But I have a feeling this has to do with the fact that we just transitioned to the new system. There are still some things working out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions? Katie, thank you very much. Our next item is addressing community concerns about the state of the library. We have a person who would like to speak. Laura, would you like to speak at this time, please?
Good afternoon. Laura Hunter with the Escanito Library Watch Talk. I want to first thank Adara for your, for your responses, and Mr. Schwab, thank you for taking time to meet with us. That was really helpful, and wanted to just speak to the responses today. So, first of all, on the, the 3D printer, so I wanted to mention, I mean, it just, those of you who were around back then, a big part of what we were promised was a makerspace with 3D printer, and everybody could use it, and here we are, two years later, we still don't have it. We had tried, we had talked to the staff a number of times before we wrote this notice of concern, and we were told, you know, it'll be ready in September, and then it didn't get ready, and so on and on. My, our concern here is why does, why do the Friends of the Library, why do we, why do they have to pay for the filament? This was something that was promised by LSNS as part of their contract. They should be paying for that. If the Friends of the Library wants to give additional stuff, but it shouldn't be incumbent on them, on the Friends of the Library, to provide the basic services that we were promised. If we, it's been hard to figure out. Sometimes we hear we don't have filament. Well, that's we heard through this. Other times, it's when we don't have trained people. The Arts Center, someone told me the Arts Center has one that's available for people to use. So, it can be done, and this is something we were promised. So, I guess our request there and response would be that you ask that LSNS pay for the filament necessary to operate, and if the Friends of the Library wants to supplement that, then great. On the second one about the Pulitzer Prize winners, so we had asked that all of them from, not just from 1998, but from 1917, be in the library, and as you also recall, a fear we had was that we wouldn't have the ability to control the books or get the books that our particular community wanted. So, we have gone through the list multiple times. We did send you a list of the complete ones, and there's a lot of books that are not there. I mean, The Revers, Advising Consent, The Fixer, Independence Day, Angler of the Coast by Wallace Stechner, Gravity's Rainbow. These are not, you know, unknown books. These are well-known books, and then there are many, like Ironweed and Lonesome Dove that are in video only. So, I understand the response. I think what we're asking you, as the board of trustees, if you would support our request to have a book copy, so we don't have to pay for it over and over, a book copy of one, at least one copy of every one of the Pulitzer Prize winners. That is, we can find and is available to have in the library, and maybe can be featured on a certain shelf or something, and I know we're trying to get rid of shelves, but we have extra, so maybe we can put all the Pulitzer Prize winners in one, and that would cultivate and be used as a way to encourage people to read. On the last one, I will, I just, when I checked the agenda, this information was not available, so I did get it today, but I haven't been able to follow up with the person who filed it, but I would be interested in hearing from you if you think that we should have an ESL program at the library for people. I mean, I know there's many other places people can go probably, but the library is the center of the city. It's the heartbeat of the city, and a lot of people are comfortable going to the library. They may not know about the other things. So, here is somebody who offered to do it for free. I guess we would like to hear if you think that that would be a good idea to pursue that. So, with that, I think that's all I had, and so summary, we would ask you to tell us, LSNS, they have to pay for what we need to operate the 3D printer and make it available as soon as possible. It's already been almost two years. Will you support a book copy of all the Pulitzer Prize winners, direct step in that way? And then, what do you think about the ESL program? Thank you very much.
Okay, John?
A little clarification. I think I heard this right, but I want to make sure. So, from 1917 through 1997, you want a copy of every book on the shelf in the library? Pulitzer Prize winner?
Yeah, of the winner, of the literature winner.
Right, of the literature, Pulitzer Prize literature winner. So, that would be one book a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I know there's all, all kinds of different Pulitzer Prize categories.
Yeah, yeah, that is a list, and so there's a list of the winners, of the literature, and there's one a year, and there are runners-up. I mean, in I feel, we have a runners-up too, but there's one on this, a run a year from then, and we sent, we sent the list, so yeah.
I didn't receive that list. Where's?
It was, there was a link in our, what we filed. Did you see the note, the letter that we?
The email that I sent to all of you.
Had the link.
Yes.
It was in the notice of concern, and I would love to be able to send to all of you, but that, your emails are not available, so I sent to the two that I had for the library and the president.
Sure.
Hopefully you get up and got to all of you. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
It's 80 books. It's not.
Okay, it's 80 books.
I think. Maybe do some more, but.
It's common practice whenever the Pulitzer is announced that libraries will always order one, if not multiple, copies. order one and not multiple copies. The thing is, over time, and each library has, can have their own policy, so it's certainly something that we can look at. But an item is not checked out after numerous years and it's sitting on the shelf, and it doesn't seem to be circulating, and it's not being taken out, it's often removed from the collection in the room for the new, new books, new Pulitzers, new bestsellers, what have you.
And our policy, sorry, Dara, to cut you off, but our policy is two years, correct? If something hasn't been checked out in two years?
No, there's nothing that specific, because other things are taken into account. For instance, we probably have items of some of the classics that haven't been checked out in multiple years, but because they're classics, that title would be taken into consideration. So there's very pieces that would be weighted to determine what stays and what goes. If I, and I'm basing this on twenty years of other libraries, so I can't specifically speak to why Escanito, you know, doesn't have them now, but I would think most likely they will be deleted out of the collection at some point.
Or, or the copy got destroyed or damaged beyond use and there was no further demand for it.
Right.
Yeah, so it wasn't replaced.
The fact that they're Pulitzers, it doesn't necessarily mean that it isn't going to be an actively circulating item. That said, it is a priority for us to have those other eighty, if we can find them in print and they're not extremely expensive, that would be something we can add, especially anything that's, you know, a symbol still commonly being printed. We, we can look at adding those eighty titles.
Not adding eighty, it's a total.
Oh, it's a total, oh, okay, I'm sorry. So in that case, it wouldn't even be, because we, I thought, oh, yes, okay.
I would, I would like to recommend we do this, but I would like a caveat. I want to see each year, how many of those are checked out. So a year from the time we get them on the shelf, I want to know how many are checked out. Because I want to see if, if this is a, is a really legitimate community concern, I think it's a, it's a feather in the cap of the library if we have one from each year. But I also want some accountability to know how much demand there is for these. So I would move that we do bring, that we do purchase one copy, so that we have at least one copy of each of the Pulitzer Prize winners with the caveat that we also have some accountability on the usage after a year and after two years, so we have a little idea as to whether or not this is something the community really wants.
Okay, so can I, sorry, go ahead, Elmer.
Oh, with regard to Pulitzer Prize, that's of course one of the major prizes of, what, I don't know if people know this, but there are about five different categories within fiction, non-fiction, biography, and so on. So there's a difference. And there is a difference, I think, with respect to how many people are interested in, in all of those. Novels quite often are very, very popular. So I, I say that from the experience because we have sections in the Friends of the Library where we, I look up the authors and we get copies of literary awards, gives us an idea of how often college clients... May, may I address that, I don't know if it's a concern?
Can you just go closer to the mic, please?
Maybe for clarification, I, I think what may have been implied, maybe not intended to, was that you said something like the library, the Friends of the Library should not have to buy...
The filament.
What?
The filament for the 3D printer?
Yes. I, you may be aware of it, and maybe I'm not as, I shouldn't be as concerned as I thought. The Friends of the Library are not obligated to buy anything at all. We decide, if the staff comes in and says, I would like, you know, they make a request for books or whatever, or a printer, the Friends of the Library have the option of saying, no, that's not in our priorities. And what we have done in the past, and I think it's very successful, is that we share with the staff, the library, here are our priorities. So you can come to us and ask for money to do that, but we at any time can say, no, we are not obligated to purchase anything. And so we have, in fact, there's a specific list of things that we will not purchase. For example, furniture, that we think, at least in the past, that the city should pay for that and take care of that. Anyway, I, I don't mean to overreact, but in case the feeling is, hey, the Friends are, in a sense, obligated to pay for certain things, that's not the case, we are not. We decide when the staff comes in every month, and they, they ask for a certain request at any time, the board can say, sorry, we don't feel that's within our priorities to spend our money. Thank you.
So the only concern I have about bringing in all of the Pulitzers from 1917 is the cost and the trade-offs. So, so if, if we were to do that, I would like to know before we decide to, what that cost would be, and if we assume that cost, what can we not purchase in the future? And maybe that's, maybe it's going to be extremely easy, and I think that that is a great way to ensure that we have a, a good collection in the library.
I can put together an itemized list of what we're missing, because we would also need to look retroactively if we're specifically talking, making sure that they're all a print copy for all of them, because some of them we have in ebook.
Okay.
It's so, we'll take that into account as well.
Wonderful.
But I can create that list.
And then I think in order for this to, like Ron said, you know, we, we would like to see people use the books, but I think in order for this to be a meaningful step, we would want to put a, a policy in place for the Pulitzer collection itself. So ensuring that, you know, maybe it stays around for at least ten years, and then after that, we could look at potentially culling the collection if we haven't had, you know, interest.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to put it on some sort of demonstra, like, some sort of display, because we don't...
Right.
... be items that are sought after, but I think on a display...
Right, completely, I agree, yes. So if we're going to make this, take this initiative, it should be maybe its own, like you said, its own section of the library or on its own rack.
So Dara, could you then put together for us an approximate cost for next month?
Yes, because my one concern that I have are going to be some of the older books that might be out of print, could be rather expensive. So I think that that would be, if we put together a cost, we can also come up with a plan of, of purchase times as well, because depending on that cost, we may or may not be able to just buy them all at the same time.
And then...
Makes sense.
And then I agree with Carolyn, a policy, so that we have something to fall back on.
Yeah, it looks like there was, there was probably something in the past, policy-wise, because there's nothing past 1978, not even one, nothing, so...
No book ever, at all? There, there are no books?
No, there, there's no, nothing past older than 1978.
Yeah, Dara. There are a couple.
A couple.
Are you talking about, in our collection as a whole?
Yes.
Pulitzer?
Pulitzer.
Oh, Pulitzer specifically. Oh, okay, okay. I was thinking maybe you were referencing the entire collection.
Can I clarify something?
Laura, why don't you come to the mic?
Yeah, come on.
Chris, do you have a question? We have to clarify, we're not asking, we feel like we are the community, so that's one thing. We're not asking for every Pulitzer ever awarded, the prizes for literature, I have the list, we've been through it.
I'll hand it over to you safely, word.
So we've gone through and marked which ones are only ebook, only video, there's no copy, whatever. Maybe, thank you for supporting the idea of making it a special thing. I didn't, I don't do this, but people told me, it's a thing, people want to read all the Pulitzers, okay, whatever. And so maybe that could be a marketing thing, and maybe there could be a list of, hey, do you have these books at home? I have a Lonesome Dove, bring it and, and give it. So maybe there's ways to creatively do it. If it's an ancient book and it costs a billion dollars, then obviously that's not reasonable. But the point, hopefully the point's there. Elmer, I totally understand, you guys have your own money, you can spend it how you want, but the way this reads is, the only reason we're getting the 3D printer is thanks to the generosity of the Friends of the Library, because they're paying for it, this is what it says, maybe that's not what you meant. But our point is, this was something that LSNS promised us, it was a great new, perfect library they were going to bring to us, and so it, it, that's why we feel like that promise should be kept. We understand, and, you know, it's great that you're doing that, but that shouldn't be on you, it shouldn't be on the company running the library.
Well, the difference and the reason that Friends were kind enough to do this is for, it allows copies, 3D printed items to be free. Most libraries, just like when you run a photocopy, you print from the printer, you pay a fee. This allows people to submit a 3D image and use something, especially if they're making a prototype for a business idea or something like that, and it would be free to the community. Otherwise, there would probably, we would probably have to charge the cost of the filament, just like we would charge for the cost of ink, and it's a common practice in libraries everywhere.
I have a question regarding the, the, the books, not only the, the ones that Laura's talking about, but it seems like you did, the library has deleted a lot of books, because it's part of the policy that if they haven't been circulating for, for three years, then, you know, they're put on a, a list of books to get rid of. Is that correct? So were any of these books from 1970 to 1990, were those that were, that were gotten rid of on that list?
It's quite possible. Keep in mind, they've been here since July, so I can't speak to why they disappeared. I think that's very likely that they were deleted out.
So I, I have, I'm not the only one, regarding the policy to get rid of books that haven't circulated for three years. That's a real problem. I, I, I wish that there would be a, a more thorough study of that.
There is, that's why only libraries...
I'm so sorry, can we use the microphones, just because anyone listening from home...
So librarians are the only ones that can actually weed items, okay? Because they have a master's degree and professional level of education specific to, yes, they might, they might look first at items that are in bad condition, or items that have not circulated in three years, but they're also going to take into account, this is a Pulitzer. Very likely that a Pulitzer, while another book, a popular bestseller, that would get weeded after, you know, three years if nobody looked at it, a Pulitzer could sit for twelve-plus years, and a librarian might still struggle with, okay, is it time to let it go? But after fifteen years, if it's in bad condition and nobody's taking it off the shelf, it's very likely they would weed it.
May, may I, may I add something to that? The good news is, the library for a number of years has circulated, decided no longer want this book, and so it was discarded. But some years ago, we met with the library and asked, why don't you just give those books that you no longer need to us and we'll sell them in the store? And we do, unless they're pretty ratty, they do sell, you know, fifty cents or something like that, so it's a plus. They don't all go into the garbage can.
Oh, right, right. And many of them go to other organizations or places that can use them.
Well, I, I do think that Carolyn has a good idea. When we get to the point of, of adopting some kind of a, a policy, or adopting the fact that we're going to buy these ones that are missing, we need to have a policy that goes along with it. And I like the idea of putting it all together, where people might see, this is the Pulitzer area, and like, there may be someone that wants to read every one of them. But I think we do need to start with using facts and come up with what it's going to cost us.
Sure, let's, let's do that, but, but if, let's assume that it costs way too much and we're going to have to, to consume this elephant one bite at a time. Putting together a policy that says, this is what we're going to do with Pulitzers and, and other award-winning books, that from this point forward is a good idea.
So I think when we're talking about, you know, the, the policy that may, that will not apply to the Pulitzers, like what we use now to, to cull our collection, I think I would like to, to know what other libraries in the LSNS system use as a best practice. So I know it's up to, whether that be, it's up to the librarian, or, you know, what the best practice is, what's the industry standard? I would like to know that for next time, or if you have it now.
I don't have it now, I did just want to mention though, that our collection development policy, as well as our guidelines for collection development, are public, they are posted on our website, so anyone can take a look at them and see, they are approved by you, the Board of Trustees, we usually review them on a, every two-year basis. I believe we reviewed them either early this year or last year, and they were split into two documents, one that is the actual policy, as well as the guidelines that mention the types of formats that we collect for, et cetera. So if you'd like, I can bring copies of that, so you can just review it next time. But additionally, they are both public documents that are available on our website for anyone to view. And we will look into if there is some standard within LSNS.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, our next item is the Library Director's Report.
For, I just also wanted to mention, it's been suggested as well that we have the English...
Oh, so we didn't address that, that's right.
We do not, because both Palomar and Escanito Adult Center offer those programs for free.
And, and so what is the difference between the literacy program that way we do and, and ESL program?
So the literacy program, you have to have a basic conversational level of English.
Okay.
So you have a kind of a basic groundwork for, for English before we go into literacy and improve those skills.
Okay. So would you say, so I would assume that the ESL program is absolutely no English requirement at that, in order to enter, right?
Right, there is not, right. You're coming to English from another language, and that's not always the case at the literacy center.
Right.
We often refer people that come to the literacy center, to Palomar or to the Adult Center, to get to kind of that level where they can then take those skills that they learned there, and we can work with them for literacy to go on to whatever their next steps are going to be.
Okay, so I have two questions. The first one being, do you have any, do you have any scheduled meetings with the ESL programs, where you'd go in and say, once that, once you are conversational, you're able to enter this program? Like, any like marketing basically towards those individuals who would need an ESL program?
Not only, just between the, the literacy department and people at both centers, where they, I have this person, it's usually a one-on-one basis, I have this person, they're at this level, you know, I'd like to send them, refer them over to you, or they'll just take the information and go on their own.
Right. Okay. And then my second question is, do we have staff who are fluent enough in Spanish that would, we would be able to establish a program?
Even if we did, they still have to have the training for English as a second language.
Okay.
The other issue we have is the space, because they have a place to be tutored. We have some cubicle-type spaces along the hallway on the second floor.
I've seen those.
And they're, they're like a tutor, but not super private.
Right.
So that is kind of a better issue, and that's where the classroom setting or, you know, Palomar or the Adult Center are really helpful.
Okay. So I think from my perspective, if we want to, I, I think it would be good if we did more marketing outreach to people who are in these programs, you know, once, twice, once a quarter, maybe, just to let them know that once they do get to a conversational level, they do have other services available to them from the library, from the city. I don't think, as of right now, that it would be in the library's best interest to start a program when we do have programs available.
So Carolyn, mainly you're saying we should market...
We, we should market that we have services available to individuals, once they reach the level that we can serve them at, right? And because we have, they have ESL programs available to them at two other locations, I would say that that is sufficient enough, from the library's perspective. Okay.
Do you want to put that in the formal motion? Do you want to put that in a formal motion?
I mean, I would love to hear other people's thoughts on the board.
If it's offered in two other locations, unless there's some compelling reason, I can't, which I don't know of any compelling reason, I don't see why we would want to have a third one, just for, to have something, if it's not, we're not going to have the demand, we don't even know if there's a demand for this at this point. Because the last time we've offered it was years and years ago, over five years ago. In fact, we can't even remember how many years ago it was, that's when we put down five, is that correct?
Yes, I had asked, I don't have an exact date, but I asked, I was told, over 10 years ago, but I'm not sure, so that's why I'm saying over five, is that what we can say with certainty?
Laura, what is, what, I'm not going to take people after the meeting starts, because we, one of the reasons we moved over here was to formalize it and do it the way we're supposed to, but if, based on what you turned in, if she has a pertinent comment, I'll take it. But I want your group to know that they need to turn these in when they get here.
She thought the meeting was at the library, because she has a Bend one in her house, and she.
Okay.
In San Marcos, so hopefully we can be flexible enough, given that there's nobody else here.
Okay, we will let that happen, but I, I'm not going to, we're not going to run it like we did at the old place where everybody just, it was like a, everybody's butting in anytime they want. Okay.
She did not get to everybody.
Okay, well then, we would let her speak then, if you'd like to, right now.
Oh, please do.
This one in the middle, please.
My name is Karen Backman, I've been a resident of Escondido since 2002. I am a certified ESL teacher, I have also taken the Lubach training, I'm currently tutoring ESL on a volunteer basis with the county in San Marcos. We have always had a program for ESL in the, in our, in our Escondido library until we turned it over to outside control. I have approached the people with my resume and with my plan to reestablish, to start a program for ESL voluntarily, I'm fluent in Spanish, and I gave, I gave my information to the lady, the administrative assistant, who takes people in, just inside the glass doors, and I never heard back, this was back in June. I have just rushed over here from San Marcos, where I was tutoring a student just now, until three, and I had to cut it short. I apologize for being late. This program has always been in the Escondido library system, it has always been available until we turned it over to, to the people in Delaware. This is not a, a big foreign idea, this was my volunteer offer, and I have the ability, the capacity, and the wherewithal to start a program and to tutor students. I have, I have the experience as well. And I'm very, very concerned that this is being shut down and thrown away because there are other places. Yes, there's a place at Palomar, you have to go through the university, or through the college. There is a place in the county, but we don't have a county library presence in Escondido. There is one in Vista, there's one in San Marcos. We have a whole immigrant population in Escondido that isn't that mobile, and it should be right here in Escondido for them, as it always has been. I'm truly sorely disappointed that I'm not given the opportunity to help for free of my resources and my talents and my training, and thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, may I, I have about 20 years' experience with the library, as the Friends of the Library and, of course, on the board. Also, I have had, as you have, experienced with ESL programs. We had one time in, in the elementary school district, that was an extremely important, organized program. I didn't know, and maybe it happened, I wasn't aware that we had a full ESL program in the last 20 years at the library.
We didn't. I mean, I've worked for the library, for the city, for almost 13 years, and we did not have an ESL program. We've always had a literacy program. Right, so, to clarify your point, we did not have an ESL program. There is a distinction between ESL and literacy.
Which is what Dara just explained, so the literacy program requires a certain level of conversational English.
And it also is funded by the state.
Right.
And the state is very specific as to who participates in literacy, and that there's a definite delineation between the literacy funds and not ESL.
Right, and our literacy program is very strong, and we are huge proponents of it. All five board members went to the awards ceremony this year, it was an amazing show of what we do, it was absolutely phenomenal.
I'm a little confused. We have in Escondido, an ESL program at the Escondido Adult High School, or, the Escondido Adult School, pardon me. Where is that located?
Next, it's next to Sam Pascual High School, across from Kit Carson Park.
Okay, all right. So, that program has been ongoing for, I don't know.
Decades, as far as I'm aware.
Okay. All right, that's, I just want to get that clarified in my mind, thank you.
They're also available for free, Dara confirmed that earlier today. The only cost is if you are taking the ESL program through Palomar for credit, which most working adults or, you know, adults who are coming at this aren't doing it for credit, they're doing it to improve their lives, then it's free.
And what does it, sorry, go ahead, John.
So, that's two locations, Palomar at Midway, and, okay, so two locations within the city of Escondido that offer the program for free now.
And what does it take to be a volunteer in the literacy program?
There, there is an interview process with the literacy coordinators, the literacy teacher, and also, there is training that's required before you can start tutoring for the literacy program.
Okay, and are you accepting volunteers at this time?
We're always, we're actually fully staffed, the most, volunteer staffed, but we're always taking, people are taking applications for people that are interested for review, to certainly keep on hand, as if there's turnover, but because you need someone who can work with everyone, and also have the right temperament and patience, and it takes, it takes more than just skill, it takes a particular personality, so, once we get the right people, we do our best to keep them.
For sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, our next item is the library director's report.
Okay, so, here's our version one of the new format, under connect, one of the things I'd like to highlight this month is, for distinguished, provide programs for people who share interest, we have had the adult graphic novel book club this month, and we had a Halloween makeup program, that was actually for adults, I don't know if you've caught our social media on there, but it was actually really interesting, they would play monsters from actual Hollywood movies, as a professional makeup artist, and that program was cool for 40 people. We had our concert series, which always brings people in that aren't necessarily coming in to grab a book, and we have our bilingual book club, and scary movie night. Also, another program out in the community, certainly not just in the library, Dan represented us at Comic-Con in New York City. He's very active in Con as part of, beyond the Con, building relationships in comics that lead to next-level library planning, and he's very active with educators as well, so it's really an initiative to teach kids to expand and learn with graphic novels. The imagery is really helpful in helping them remember. We also talk about marketing, so our highlight for marketing is, we received an award for our booze and booze program, and we shared books that marketed the Escondido Public Library at the California Library Association this month. We are also still partnering with Del Lago, and they're part of our internship with 3D Printing Project. We've supported enrichment with expanded programs, again, through our adult graphic novel club and our concert series, and then I'm going to kind of move into another, other areas to highlight for hindsight. We also, we, one of our goals is to provide an accredited online high school diploma program. While at the California Library Association Conference, I was able to attend the program on this, and I've had a chance to talk to Joanna about it briefly, and I think it is something the library is very interested in pursuing, and we will hopefully be working with the state library to get that program up and running. And that, as far as the timeline, is somewhat dependent on when they want to start it for the next group. We also analyzed a collection performance, and we did as appropriate, we started a library reading program, project, and we were shifting, using Claris as a starting point to look at items that haven't been shipped, going out the last three years. To, for support staff with training and tools, we had nine people attend the California Library Association conference. And thanks to you all, last month, we removed all of the fees from our DVD's and CD's, and for providing library services outside of downtown, we had 433 people in attendance at outreach events. And we also provided quality storytimes, training, and materials to children, parents, and caregivers. We had 1,584 people in attendance in our storytimes this month. And we also had 54 teams attend programs at the library, which, while it's a much smaller number, it's still quite good for that age group. Our DS Day of the Morning program was very successful, we had 152 people in attendance, so that was great, and it was also on the same day as another, or, I'm sorry, that was a different program, I was thinking of our music program, but there was 152, so that was a very successful event. So, October was pretty busy, and I feel like we hit a lot of our benchmarks and goals. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have a question?
How did you get 152 people? Was that through, like, marketing or social media or?
We marketed through social media, newsletter, it's also a recurring event, so.
Every year?
Yeah.
Okay.
People are expecting it, so it's been growing each time we add it.
Wonderful.
The other part of that is, it's a family geared program, but it's open to all ages, so it's a nice family day.
Great.
Couple of questions I have. Are there any major staffing changes that are either, either have been done recently or will be done in the next?
We just hired a new part-time person who will start on Monday, the 18th, she'll be in the children's room, her name is April Ruiz.
Okay. And I noticed, I can't see the figure right here, but it seems that our volunteers are holding very well.
Yes.
Which is really the lighthouse of, of our program.
Yes, there's, I don't know the exact number, but they are still just over the 200 mark.
I think it was 221.
Okay.
Very good, that's great. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Ron? I was going to give just a quick update to you guys. So, the Palomar Library Partnership is continuing to move forward, I have a meeting November 22nd with Palomar, as well as Elmer, the new president of the Friends Group, Linda Parker, and Jack Anderson, who's the president of the Escondido Library Foundation. So hopefully I'll have something more to report back to you in December, or depending on when their boards meet, in December, possibly in January.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Elmer, did you have a question?
No.